I will say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of the minutes of August 25th, 2014, irregular council meeting and September 8th, 2014 special joint city with council, water and sewer utility commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 25th, 2014 regular council meeting and the September 8th, 2014 special joint city council of water and sewer utility commission.
Second.
Motion made by Wally and seconded by Mel to approve the minutes of August 25th to September 8th. Any questions or correction? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Public appearance, nothing at this time. Citizen input? Guess? Don, you got something to say?
I didn't mean it that way. I meant, you know. Sorry about that.
Hi. I'm Don Blazer, county supervisor. And I'm sorry that I have not attended enough of these meetings. Because honestly, there was a lot of things going on at the county board. And things are coming around and straightening out now. It was so much in closed session that I couldn't take and talk to you about it. But as it is, we now have a new county administrator, Todd Romanosko. And I highly support Todd. Todd was human services administrator before. And I was on aging and disability committee. And I have nothing but good to say about him. He handles himself well. He's got a sense of humor. He is factual, right down to earth. And I think he is going to be a very good county administrator. We have not announced yet who the new county commissioner, highway commissioner is. But that's coming up in the next week or so. It's down to two people. So, and I think that this will do well also. I just want to say that a lot of people in the county were not happy with the county board as it was in the past. And rightly so. That's why I ran. There are major changes going on. We've got a group from HITS from Milwaukee, north of Milwaukee, Diane Shermos. And she is taking and setting up a new county strategic plan. And also a vision for the future. And this here is very, very important. Because we had a very poor plan in the past. And maybe this sounds like a lot of political crap, but it's very, very important. Let me give you a little example of where we're going. To develop a highly functioning county board. To develop a review process of the county board by constituents and staff. Develop a training program for the county board to better define the roles and responsibilities of the board development. Develop and maintain a highly functioning county staff. Continue to develop staff training. Create an evaluation process for department heads and staff. Develop an internal and external communication plan. Create and improve communications between the department heads and home committees and county board. Supervisor to supervisor. Board and department heads to constituents. Review constituents' plans to develop a system to protect natural resources. Groundwater, quality and quantity. Run off to Lake One of Eagle. Review land and water plan. This has to be reviewed by the state. Assistance to municipalities for watershed plans for flooding and water quality. Develop a program to sustain the county's economy and develop an economic growth plan. This is how we're going. This is very, very important. And I think that all I can say is, we didn't have this in the past. Nothing close to this. And please, give us a chance to do what we can do. There's a good county board there. And we've got some good, good intelligent and hardworking people that are really trying to put this together.
Don, when you spoke of, you know, the plan that, the new plan that you wanted to get going, will that include buildings and cities in the surrounded area? Going to have some voice in this?
I'm sorry, I didn't put my hearing.
Are the cities, are the city, with the new plan that you're trying to implement, are we as cities, villages and towns, are we going to have a voice into this?
I'm trying to think exactly how that would go, but I believe that you would have. I believe that you would have. And the next meeting we have with this Shermos group, I will take and bring that up.
Okay, I would appreciate it. Because I think-
That that is very important.
We should be very part of this because it is our county.
You betcha.
Okay. Yep. So. Okay, thank you, Don, for your report. We appreciate you coming here.
Well, no problem.
Okay. Keep us abreast, huh?
Will try.
Thank you. Okay, from the consent agenda, items A, B, C, D-
Not E.
Oh, not E.
Don't have anybody yet.
No, we don't have nobody yet. Also move to approve the consent agenda items A through D.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mel and seconded by Carrie to approve from the consent agenda items A, B, C and D. Now, is there any other questions or corrections that we've discussed under committee of the hall? Hearing none, we have pulled vote of the council.
Bob?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Item E, nothing at this time. Department heads, the police department, we have nothing at this time. Is it, there was a report here from Chief Minion?
Mm-hmm.
What's going on? Okay. Park and Recreation, Anne, you have anything more to add?
We did find out that dance will start October 12th and the recital will be January 11th. And tomorrow, Becker Boilers will be here to install the burners. One was shipped and the other one wasn't, so they're going to start on the one. And then also the tree that Peters parked, the ones between the parking lot and the football field, we're treated this weekend for that ash and the ash board. So hopefully we can save those trees.
Okay, thank you. Library, Chris, you got anything more to add?
Just mention if you haven't taken a look at our Brilliant History for All on our website, those are the local history materials that we had digitized and it's viewable in full text right from the box on the bottom of the front page of our library homepage.
Thank you. Committee of bits, Laura, you got any more? Mel, or committee about them?
There's going to be a Fall Fest on October 18th, I believe. And Yarde is working on it. And it's going to be in conjunction with Pumpkin Walk. So we will have farmer's market downtown starting about 5 o'clock. And then there will be bus transportation from downtown starting at 6:15, 6:30 to the nature center. And we want to encourage everybody to use the buses because of limited parking at the nature center. And we're going to have the Earth Museum open, the Historical Society will be open as well. And there's going to be, you can adopt a poll, decorate it, that'll be a contest that's going on, and you have the opportunity to vote for what you think is the best poll. So, as we're working on, short synopsis.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dennis, I apologize. Did you, were you here as a guest or are you here for pardon?
He's here for the recommendation.
Oh, I thought, I didn't want to slay.
Being a neighbor, y'all.
Being a neighbor, gotta be good neighbors. Fire department, Chief Yankee firefighter, Jason Pilop?
Pilop.
Pilop?
Pilop.
Yeah, before we get to him, what's going on in the department? We've got our air pack, we've got the 20-year pack, 40-bott SBA bottles back in June. We finally put them in service this month with all the training that we had to do with it. It took us quite a bit of time to get through it. So we got that. We have our old ones. I've been trying for the last month and a half about to find somebody to buy them. There is absolutely nobody that'll buy them because the market is flooded. What I'm going to suggest to the council or to the city is to donate them. I did find a gentleman down by Milwaukee that takes the stuff and sends it over to India. And we've done that with some of our older equipment already. Forest Junction Stock, which also has SEBAs that they need to get rid of, and that's the route that they were going to go. So I'm thinking that would be a good thing to do that way. Fire call wise, oh, and then their power compressor, that also, but we've had that going for some time. Fire calls, we're at 44 for the year already. We've had quite a few jaws calls this year, more than usual. We'll just go that road. And we've had a number of actual fire calls too. So we're doing well there. Any questions on any of that stuff? I mean, our apparatus are doing good. I think our biggest problem we had two weeks ago was we burnt out a compressor. We got a new compressor now. Actually, we use my compressor, that burnt out this weekend. And now we went and bought a compressor right away. And so that's getting put in probably as we speak. So, and that's probably the most major thing that we're coming up against right now.
So do you have more calls this year?
I can't tell you that until the end of the month, until the end of the year. Just for the fact is, you can run into where you don't have a single call for a week, a week, a month. This year, we haven't run into that yet. So it's hard to say what's going to happen the next three months.
Is it because of Amavis? Mutually, for everybody cooperating together?
There's a lot of things that are, like, we run with Valders now. When they have the jaws, it's not basically Amavis. But I think that's only given us two or three extra calls. But we do a lot more, like when they had that tracker accident on highway down here in Long Lake, or wherever that is. In the past, we never would get called for that. Now, because shorthanded with officers and whatnot, we get called there for, to help with cleanup or with traffic control. I mean, I see that a lot, quite a bit with the traffic control. So, and I'm up in the air on that, just for the fact is, I'm sending six people out there to do traffic control when we only need one. I mean, they do need the apparatus there to protect them, but I don't need six people there. Because now I'm paying six people. So, but that's something that we've been talking to and chiefs meeting and how we're going to, and I definitely have an idea of how to do that. Anything on that part of it? Otherwise, I'll go into my new recruit. All right, what we did here is we had a gentleman put his name in to the fire department. And usually we do is, I've got like two other applicants plus this gentleman. But why we fast track this gentleman is because he's already in the fire service. He's got all the schooling, so I don't have to, we don't have to, it's, the only cost to the city with this guy is that, and it's Jason Pilop. And the only cost that we have is to give him a physical. So once he gets, and he lives in town, and as we all know, and this is on, paving it, but as we all know, full-time firemen's only work half a year, so the other half does with us. So that's definitely a bonus. He's gone through firefighter, he's gone through driver op, he's done everything that we, we need. So we took it to the fire, the fire department guys on our last, first Monday of the month. They agreed to go with it, and then now I'm bringing it to you.
So we have put in a motion?
Yes.
Also, I'll also move to approve Jason Pilop as a firefighter.
Second.
Motion made by Mel and seconded by Betty to approve for the fire department firefighter, Jason Pilop as the new firefighter. Any other questions of the chief of Jason? Hearing none, we have pulled vote of the council.
Bob?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Crystal?
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Okay, any other things, chief?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll be moving on.
I can edit that out and post, don't worry.
Thank you.
Okay, under your topic summary, we have planning mission for rezoning request of 114 West Water Street. You wouldn't know that, what that would be to the old feed mill, for, it doesn't look right. Yes. And-
Building inspector looked into that?
Yeah. In motion, we were looking for action on there to set a public hearing for that. Is there any other discussion? First of all, is there any discussion on this?
What is our building inspector's saying?
The building?
Oh, yeah. He's been, he's part of the, part of the, of this idea.
Yeah. So what does he feel?
I guess I don't, I'm not prepared to answer that question. You threw me off guard. I don't know his answers. I guess he's-
Because that would be our go-to person to find out if the building's safe or not.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Is it strong enough to do what she wants to do? Yes, structurally, yeah.
I think they have to figure out if we're going to rezonate, you know, then before, before they do anything more, they got to find out if we get the rezoning request before she proceeds.
Right.
I mean, you got to get one thing, and I guess that's what she, or the owner was asking of us.
Right, right now she doesn't have any set plan. So it's not like she's got something that she's presented to the building inspector to review.
Yeah.
But yeah, he feels that there, it can be done.
She just said she just didn't want it sitting there anymore.
Right, right.
For no reason.
Yeah.
I'll move to set a public hearing for Monday, October 17th, 2014 at 7:10 p.m. Hear any testimony for or against the zoning request at 114 West Water Street, changing it from R2 to R2 Districts, C1 District.
Seconded at?
During the day, it goes back to 24.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
24.
Sorry about that. Good catch, Troy.
That's a Friday.
Oh, man, I must've had Friday on my brain.
No.
That is a Friday. That is a Friday.
Need some help?
I'm guessing, yeah.
27 is-
The council's 27.
27.
Got it. So I had the seven, right? Just had the one wrong.
So where are we going? What date are we picking here? 27.
27.
27, okay.
Through the dirt and it landed on the 27th.
Yep.
It's so rare when we have, huh?
There was a correction in this copy summary. Okay. Who seconded that?
I did.
Hold on. A motion made by Mel and seconded by Wally to set a public hearing for testimony for or against 114 West Water Street from R1, from 1-1 and 2, and R2 to C1 District. Okay, any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, item number B, pool repair project plan review and award bids. In your packet, you had a summary of what the Park and Recreation Committee has requested of us. And tonight we had this with park member Dennis Miller. If there's any questions or comments, maybe Dennis would be kind to comment on what your decisions are. So I'll open this up before-
I would assume that these are all the bids, correct?
Yes.
And the ones that are highlighted, the ones that we're going to go with?
Right.
Can you tell me why the pool deck, locker room, why we're choosing that one versus American pavement solution?
Yes, as was what I tried to, the topic summary, is that, and Dennis and Elle met with these contractors and, or Dennis and Elle, Dennis and Anne, sorry, Anne. Met with the contractors.
Elle was there though too.
Yep, and what American pavement solution?
It's right behind, or to the sample, but it's really heavy.
Oh. Oh, wow. Yeah, okay, that's a sample from what, Casuric's?
No, American pavement. It's a piece of cement where they were going to take and add sand to this paint, just put it on top, and then put another coat over like a clear coat. Okay? So it's pretty much what Bonnie already did, but just a little higher grade material. He did call me back because when he did give us this quote, it did not include taking care of any cracks, joints or sprawls or anything like that, you know, filling in. He was just going to go over it like painting. And now his new bid is $19,860. So it went up. And, I mean, Dennis, you can chime in too. The other three bids are all going to do this quartz flooring, which is about an eight-inch thick, and it comes in all different colors you get to pick. So it's poured on, you know, and it looks like this. And that bid from Casuric and everything with the joints and taking care of all the holes and everything.
Longer lasting product.
Yeah, longer lasting product, so.
I just didn't understand.
Yeah, that is why, because they weren't bidding apples to apples.
Apples, yeah, okay. So the other three coats are all pretty good.
I just didn't understand that if we really needed to go higher quality, but absolutely if we're going to spend money, we want it to last a long, a long, a long time. Even longer than we want it to last.
And he's like that, like- What? The sewer exits from down here? Yeah, yeah, they're local. They're local, yeah. What is this thing?
So is there a correction in the recommendation here then?
No.
For dollars? That, what we have here is right numbers?
Right.
Okay, I, okay, I just wanted to-
She was just saying that when they're adding, they went up on the American pavement.
American pavement, we're not buying. It's to $19,860.
But we're not taking that one.
We're not taking that one.
Yeah, so it doesn't matter.
So how soon would we be wanting to do this? Does this come out of this year's contingency or next year's contingency?
This year.
So this year's contingency.
Yeah, the idea is to have it done within the next, what time are you thinking? You have some pool lessons, swim lessons yet that are, you're finishing up on, but-
Yeah, it all depends on the pool company to get in here too. Get a coordinate all that one. Things are approved and I can get in contact with them and start.
Because you want to do it, you don't want to have walls being painted, what other things are going on, so it's all got to kind of coordinate together.
Pull these down probably about a month, three weeks to a month. But then we empty it and then they can come in and do the pool and get the painting done and then the flooring will be the last. But we have to get the doors and that down in the locker rooms before they can do the flooring in there, so.
So there goes tomorrow.
Because I guess we'd rather have it on one year.
Right. I would say too, I mean, if you're going to fight the bullet, do it this year.
Absolutely.
So you need your proposals ready?
Yes.
Okay, move to award the bid for resurfacing the swimming pool project to, what is that, Levens?
Newman.
Newman's Pool for $51,995. And for resurfacing, repainting the pool deck, locker room floor project to-
Casuric.
Casuric, for $24,600. For the shower replacement project to, no, Moons Plumbing, I can't even speak to them, for $11,300. For the replacement of locker room doors, frames, projects of the floors for $11,988. And for painting the walls in the pool room and painting and painting for $12,100.
I'll second.
A motion made by Larry and seconded by Carrie, move the bids for the swimming pool projects. Is there any other questions or discussion? Dennis, you got any more, anything to add that you want to?
Not really. I think you pretty much covered everything.
So just to hold us for a while till we get, these are the main things we need done?
Absolutely. It's kind of cosmetic, but this, things that absolutely really need to be done.
Yeah.
The pools, the dior need to paint, painting the walls and really, when you go in and really look at it with this light out, really light in the building, they're really bad.
Yeah.
And the floors, really need to have something done. And this, the product that Casuric is doing is a very, very good product. And I did go back and check on some of the products he's done. They've held up, held up very well. I mean, it really is a catalog job, what he'll do. Yes, it will, it will just enhance the flooring in both locker rooms. It'll be amazing. And around the pool, it'll look really nice.
That going around the pool also?
Oh, yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that needs to- All the way around both pools.
Okay.
Everything in the pool area, I mean.
Oh, that's great.
He's going to sandblast it, don't take all the, any oil or anything that's embedded in the concrete, he'll blast that out. Which that's, it's going to be a little tricky, and we're going to try to incorporate that with Newman Pools.
Yeah.
Casuric wants Newman Pools to do that first, but I think would be the opposite, but no, he said he wants that done first. And then he'll come in and he will blast the floors. So of course, a lot of that's going to go into the pools, pool, but it won't get any water. He'll be responsible for cleaning that, which will be good.
The only thing I came across is our light above our pool and that. Is there anything we can do with those things?
Have you come up with anything, Anne, for getting something there?
Not yet, no.
No, the Park and Recreation Committee did talk about that too.
Yes, we did.
And we're reviewing to see if we can get somebody in there. The thing is, you can't, to get some type of equipment to get that high is what the challenge is.
They got it. That's the big thing.
How does it get it in there?
Yeah, how do you get it in there?
How do you get it in there?
Because those glass doors-
They have equipment that, I can drive right through those doors. They have equipment there enough. Well, you could drive right through an ordinary door, a 30-inch door. Scissors lift for bucks of this, they have them that narrow, so they can do that kind of stuff.
Oh, I can lift those.
Anywhere you want to go.
Well, maybe if you can chat with Anne.
I've been there. I used to do it.
Okay. Give her some ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd like to get that-
There's a lot of places you have 20-foot ceiling, so you got to have, and you got to go through little narrow doors to get in there. But they do have equipment. If an electrical contractor wants to do it, you can go to a rental place and that's-
United Men's, right.
Yeah. And there's the hard way too, it's called scambling.
Yeah.
Other than that-
You got somebody brave enough to climb that high.
I don't know. That's the big deal.
Okay.
All the time.
Put some bungees out of them while the boss getting in.
Get some revenue by bungeeing off the scamp. Oh, yeah, right.
Get some revenue.
You know the power poles over here? That great iron works in the back where the new, where the furnaces are? You guys have put them up? The poles and the power, or the transformer?
You did.
Way back in the 70s. Okay, is there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we have a pull vote of the council.
Bob?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
That motion is carried. So I guess Park and Rec, you can let her fly now. Okay, Library Board Commission report, nothing on there yet. Utility Commission, okay, we have items here from McMahon.
Okay, the first items were the engineering agreements related to the 2015 INI projects. There's actually three separate agreements, I'm assuming that they were included in your packets. The first one is the topographic field survey for the work on the portion of the project that is south of Ryan Street. The survey work will focus in the terrace area and will identify the utilities that will be called in by Digger's Hotline and will also survey curves and sidewalks and that kind of thing. And AutoCAD base maps will be prepared. The reason that we're bringing this forward now is because we want to do the work before the snow and ice accumulates and get that done. The fee for that is eight thousand nine hundred dollars, and it's projected that there'll be about a week of field work. What I'd like to do is run through all three agreements and then I can answer questions.
Okay.
Cause they all kind of go together. The topo survey work for the section of the project on Columbus North of Ryan Street, that was presented to the Utility Commission previously, and the dollar amount was, I think like
Twenty-four hundred or something like that.
Twenty-four hundred dollars, and Utility Commission was able to approve that, they have a limit, and so that's why that's not presented tonight. Then, there's also two agreements for engineering, design, bidding, and construction services, they're very similar agreements, but they are split between the area north of Ryan Street and the area south of Ryan. The services are very similar, design services consist of coordination meetings, developing project plans, preparing the assessment reports, and preparing specifications and drawings. Bidding consists of answering questions of contractors, when the projects are out for bids, and tabulating the bids when they're received from the contractors. The construction phase consists of the pre-bid meeting, construction staking, and then general project oversight, and then project representative services. Now that is not defined because a lot of the work is being done on private property, and it could either be done by your building inspector, or if you want to hire McMahon or some other representative to do that, all of that has not been defined. But then there's also a lot of other work associated with that, and that includes preparing the record drawings and including the project work in your GIS system. So that's included in the onsite services. The fees are included in the agreement, rather than rattle off all the numbers, I'll just give you the total and then if you want me to break it down. For the portion south of Ryan Street, the total fee is thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, but that doesn't include the onsite services that I told you has not been determined. And then for the portion north on Columbus Street, the fee is twenty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, not including the onsite services. So that's kind of a quick run-through, so what kind of questions do you have that can give you more information?
I have a letter, email I received from one of the residents there. And was presented to Laurie this morning, asked for responses, that has been made for everybody. So I'd kind of like to go through that.
Sure.
And, first question is, why a mini storm sewer? I don't have a sump pump, I don't have an leaky basement. Why do I need a mini storm sewer? And why should I have to pay the cost? And I think that's a good question. You know, you're adding, if you do a lateral and you seal, it's sealed, the lateral don't leak. Then, why do you need a mini storm sewer? If you put a mini storm sewer in, aren't you going to be pumping more water down your streets and cause more flooding? Instead of letting the water sit in your yards? So, they're very much against putting mini storm sewers in at this time, and with this project.
Do you want me to address that?
Well, first of all, why, number one, that discussion came from the Utilities Commission. So that, we can start off from that way. And, and I guess Utility followed it through and gave McMahon the direction to go, so if you want to take it from there.
The purpose of the mini storm sewers is to give people the opportunity to connect their sump pumps to the storm sewer, because, first of all, and there's another number of reasons for that. People that have storm sewers right now, some of them, they don't really have a good place to discharge their storm sewers. They may be discharging them onto their driveways, or into their backyard and they're causing ponding, or worse, they're finding ways to connect them in to their sanitary sewer, which is one thing that we're trying to avoid. So the thought was if they had a good place for them to go, then they would be more inclined to connect them in to the storm sewer, which is the correct place to go. Also, the other concern is, as the city does these projects and they start sealing up the sanitary laterals where all of this water is draining into, unfortunately, that water that's draining into the sanitary sewer may try to find other places to go, and it may be coming into the basements, and people are going to want to start installing sump pumps. And then they're going to go, oh gosh, I need to go somewhere with this sump pump water, where am I going to go with it? So that's why they wanted to give them a storm drain to go with it. So that's some of the reasoning with the storm drain, you know, the mini storms are being provided.
I guess my response to that is, they've never had a water problem. And, and I don't see where this really helps them.
But, like she said, if they do what they're going to do, they could start having problems because the water's going to back up somewhere else.
Right, it's not going to be the goal.
And that's stated several times.
Maybe it ain't going there now, but it could in the future.
That was stated in a lot of the meetings, the fact that, because when you start sealing it up, it's going to go somewhere.
It's going to have to go somewhere.
But you're only talking to the lateral area, that's a small, small area of your yard.
But, when we saw that video, the one we saw that video is a pretty good gusher. The water going through those laterals.
If we're not, if we're disputing the lateral shouldn't be replaced. So, thought is, why don't we just go ahead and replace all the laterals? And get it done?
Which is what they're doing.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah, but you're doing a whole lot more. With mini storm sewers and everything else.
We're just providing a pipe, are we, for them to hook up to, but we're not doing anything else.
Every homeowner has to pay.
Yeah.
To have the mini storm sewer put in, of which they may not use.
And the homeowner has to pay fifty percent of the cost of the mini storm sewer in the right of way. The city pays the other fifty percent, and then it's up to the homeowner if they want to do the lateral on their private property.
I'm just, my thinking is that we're fixing one problem and causing another.
But we have to fix the one problem.
We have to fix the laterals.
So, why not be proactive and, and fix the hypothetical problems also? Because if we don't, if we, if we don't provide a solution towards those problems, we're going to be in an even worse position because now we're going to have all these constituents contacting us saying, you created this problem, when in essence, we are just trying to resolve the big problem, the overflow.
And then we'd have to go back in later on at another time to fix those problems.
But you're going to go back and over these streets anyway, and do it properly. I'd like to understand how you put a lateral in without disturbing the street.
Oh, that's easy.
It just goes between the sidewalk.
Yeah, but how do you physically do that, is that a solid pipe?
You see all the random electrical?
Pardon?
You see all the random electrical?
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand that.
Same way, same way.
But you got to, but if you don't, you dig a hole by the house and a hole by the street.
Yeah.
And how do you put the solid pipe in?
The same way. You put solid pipe underground, solid pipes don't bend. They have a way of doing it.
Okay.
That's Gary there, he watched him do it with the water pipe. It's simple. Yeah, they did it with the water pipe underneath the bridge.
But you're still, you're still going to have, and, and area from where the lateral ends to where the sewer is.
That's true.
And that, and what if you have a problem where that's crushed? And what do you do about that?
What's crushed?
You know, how do you, you know, what do you do at that point?
I'm trying to figure out what's crushed.
Well, but everything's leaving now.
Where we're going to connect the old to the new, he's saying, what if that's crushed? What is our solution to that?
From where the lat line is to the center of the street.
We'll be gone before that happens.
Well, I'm just saying that's a possibility to arise.
You, you do the same thing you do now.
Yeah.
If you discover that, you have to repair it.
Okay, so then, they would fix that at that point.
Right.
But if it's, if it's the piping that we use today, the possibilities that happen is very extreme. Because it isn't like the old cement things where the king crush, and it isn't like the, your weeds or your brick, your trucks or trees are going to go through it, it's going to go around it more.
Yeah, no, but the piping that's there now is the old whatever it is.
It's going to be eliminated.
Same as what's in the, same as the lateral.
Yeah, it's going to be eliminated.
Wasn't that pipe replaced a couple years ago though, when you redid the street?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Wasn't that pipe?
Trier Street, no, it was redone, wasn't it?
On Trier Street, it wasn't, that there wasn't a pipe?
None of it was done.
We weren't mandated then?
No, we are, and basically, that's what Gary's seeing, we got to do it. We don't have, we don't have a way to get out of it because of the DNR. We have to do it, right?
Right.
If I'm, if I'm reading everything, I heard everything the last couple years, we got to put it in.
There's no doubt we got to do the laterals.
Right.
Everybody understands?
And, and the other part, you know, the question is I have.
It's the new policy that the Utility Commission set up that every home is going to have a
And we approve it.
Mini storm sewer, and we've done that, two streets already.
Yep, two streets, three streets. Actually, we did National Avenue and that street was redone, the mini storms went in there, that was the first one. Ryan Street was Highway Ten project that was done there, and now South Francis last year, so it's three.
Park two, wasn't that though, or Park Hardway?
No, not that year. That was before all that.
Okay, Mel, did you get your question answered?
I guess so.
You want to keep going?
Yeah, oh, could I speak please? I just want to make a point that I live on Ridgeway Court, which is off of Ridgeway, and on the court itself, this was two thousand and six that I built. And I have a sump pump, and it goes out and I got to drain it onto my own land. The city did not take and put storm sewers up around the court. All those homes around the court do not have access to a storm sewer. Now, what you're saying here is that this could be a real problem for us, that they all have to be connected. But hey, the city should have ran a storm sewer up there to begin with. I don't know what the laws were at that time, I, you know, I, I'm a simple man. I, I, I came from Manitowoc, and when, in Manitowoc, all the storm sewers had to be connected to the storm, or all, all the sump pumps connected to the storm sewer. And here I come out here in two thousand and six, and I get my pipe out and I run it outside. I don't know, I just don't think it's right, but what you're saying here is all people have to do this. Now, there's no place for us to even connect.
You will.
Sooner or later.
Well, you, well then you better take and connect from my house to the storm sewer, because you didn't in the first place. Well, that, that's, that's water over the dam, that's back in two thousand and six, we're in two thousand and fourteen, and we're mandated by DNR, we have to correct the problem, and that's what we're going to do.
So, why did you do it with all the other homes on Ridgeway Court?
Well, let's continue our.
That, that development happened in nineteen ninety-eight?
Ninety-eight.
Yeah, so I don't, you know.
We don't know.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Why it was done that way, I don't know, I wasn't hearing them.
Were there other questions, or did you want me to run through the responses to the questions that were submitted by Craig?
I got my answers.
Okay. Okay, so then back to the agreements, were there questions on the agreements? The services that we would provide?
How do we, how are we going to do that, to determine if we want them to do some of the work, or if we're going to do it in health? If we choose to do it ourselves, or if we choose to not do it ourselves, are we going to have to put through a different motion? Or, in regards to the?
That, that inspector, we've been talking with the building inspector, and as of last Thursday, I left him to go home for the weekend to think about, you know, what this all means, because he did do the inspections on South Francis Street, but that was a smaller project. So we're talking a lot about a lot of lateral connections here. So, he's given that some thought, I, I guess, Amy, I don't know how McMahon, would, would that be a separate agreement then? For additional services, if it's something where, you know, we could hire ourselves, or the utility could hire state plumbing inspector to do it, contract out separate?
Or would we be able to do it in a dendum or something, that too?
I mean, we already have the services listed here, so.
It's just a dendum to that agreement, yeah. So you could vote on it tonight, as she's got it presented, and then bring that back at a later date, and I think that's what we were talking about doing.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So should we start rattling off the proposed motions? Are we ready? First one, move to approve the agreement of the professional services expanded for the two thousand fifteen inflow for my tongue is tight tonight, filtration reduction project presented.
I'll second.
A motion made by Larry and second by Kerry to approve the agreement for professional services, McMahon, for two thousand fifteen inflow and infiltration reduction project. Is there any questions or corrections of this? Hearing none, we have a poll vote at the council.
Spah?
Yes.
Mel?
No.
Crystal?
Yes.
Betty?
Yep.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Item number two, Lane Crystal proposed roadside geophysical exploration to identify local location for well number six. Move to approve the proposal, Lane Christian, in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for onsite geophysical exploration and work to identify the location of well six.
Second.
Motion made by Larry and second by Wally to approve, Lane Christian proposed roadside geophysical exploration to ident, to identify a located well number six, for the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Any questions or corrections? Any discussion? Hearing none, poll vote at the council?
Spah?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Betty?
Yep.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Make a motion to approve the five-year financial management plan prepared by Alleris.
Second.
Motion made by Wally and second by Kerry to approve the five-year financial management plan. Is there any questions or corrections of that? Hearing none, we have a poll vote at the council.
Spah?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
I'll make a motion, a motion to approve the change order number two request to RJM Construction for amount of two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and sixty cents.
I'll second.
Motion made by Wally, second by Crystal, to approve the change order number two to well number five pump out as software still fees modification, general contract with RJM Construction. Is there any questions or correction of that?
Why is, what happened? Why is, what happened? What actually happened?
A conduit was in the cement floor. They had drilled a hole to bring the pipe in.
That was at well three. Yeah, making the connection. Yeah. And it wasn't under...
Well five. And they didn't know it was below.
There already is.
I did the same thing if you did. Ask Laurie about that one. She'd think I found out and blew it out of going to senior level. She's like, what happened to you?
There's no way they could get around it.
Okay, now I...
I had number five break my brain too, it don't feel like bad.
At least it wasn't six.
Oh, my God. Any other discussion on that? We have a full vote of the council?
Bob?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Anything more, Amy? That's it?
That's it, Amy. Oh, update on the well number five project? That was in your packets?
Yep, they got the memo from...
Yeah.
And they did put the interior of the pump house dried out. They put heaters and dehumidifiers in and they are going to start painting inside tomorrow.
That's good.
That's hot off the press today. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Reading development committee, committee of the whole, 316, 318, South Francis Street special assessment request, which it was, you want to make a motion to go back and do it five years? Carrie?
The motion made at the committee of the whole meeting this evening was to deny the request.
I'll move to deny the request for additional years.
Okay, a motion made by Betty and second by Bob to deny the request for 316, South Francis Street special assessment request. Is that an ordinance? Yeah, ordinance.
Your policy is...
That's our policy. Per policy. Okay. Any other question or correction? We have a full vote of the council?
Bob?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
That motion is carried. 2015 road maintenance agreement with the town of Brilliant.
Move to adopt the 2015 road maintenance agreement with the town of Brilliant.
Motion made by Carrie, second by Bob to approve the 2015 road maintenance agreement with the town of Brilliant. Any questions or correction on that? You have a full vote of the council?
Mel?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carrie?
That motion is carried. Cemetery Commission, you have anything, Carrie?
Nope, all dead issues. We're working on that one for a while.
Is there any old business? Any old business from anybody? Is there any new business?
Yeah, we got one at the Housing Authority. It's going to be kind of rough.
What's that again?
The Housing Authority? What happened is the HUDs come up with a new thing. I think I told you, Laurie, about it.
I think you told us all.
Yeah. I don't remember. We still don't know where we're going to get the money to pay for it. So, oh, yeah, I'm going to see our representatives in Washington. I got appointments with them for next week. See what they can do about it. Because I think it's a little wrong what they're doing to us.
Yeah.
Has it actually been passed?
You don't need to pass anything. It comes right out of HUD and they can write laws, just whatever, do whatever they want. They're like the EPA.
Then they have passed this, or they're not passed.
They just decided this is what you're going to have to do if you want to do a HUD.
Can you refresh us, Larry, on what?
What it was is they're going to, we feel, we do one thing already that costs about five grand per building and that's what we, it's an eval. Now they want to carry it further. They want to call it green energy evaluation. And you can't take what they want and do it ourselves. We have to hire an engineering, an independent engineering group to do it and it's going to cost us like 10 grand. And our budgets are tight anyhow because we just got to keep it down there where we just can get by because you ain't allowed to go in, they hired it what the law of the HUD wants. So I'm going over to see Reed Rivel and I'm going to go see Ron Johnson, both, and talk to them about this situation. So I don't know. Because we just redid all our places. You know, you can't get them any better than what they are.
Do you think they have a grandfather you in that?
No grandfather's allowed. It's sad. Yeah, we talked to them several times. They're not good people like the IRS.
Any more, Larry?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any more new business? Communications City Administrator?
Next week, Tuesday, September 30th, there is some more work going to be done with the group that's meeting on the Manitowoc River watershed, stormwater flooding workshop. I'm going to start, meet at Hilbert at 5:30, jump on buses, I guess, and take a tour. And if any of you are interested, I know about four or five of you already said yes, so I'm going to have to post it as a meeting. But let me know so I can let Mary Corral know. I've already told her at least about four from Brilliant, so it'd be an educational night. Then also with the workshops for budget, I had proposed a couple of meetings. I know there is a requirement with the well project that Amy and I are working on and that's drafting a wellhead protection plan. So we're trying to coordinate some of these meetings. They'll be held, have to be held as special counsel and joint utility meetings, the first one on the 13th, so we can get that proposal in front of you or that plan. It's going to be in ordinance form. And then you'd set your public hearing date for the 10th of November, which I'm proposing you'd set that date for your council to adopt the 2015 budget anyway. The county treasurer would like levies to his office by the 15th of November. I, yes, it does. Yeah, it should be fine. I'm getting all the reports from the state levels already, which is surprising how years passed. I would have to wait for a long time to get like manufacturing assessment and things like that. So I got the special, or the assessment rolls done already. So it should all come into place. So that's a plan right now. We do have a general election on November 4th.
Is it ID cards, too?
Yes.
Really?
That wall was changed.
I'd like to go back to all the people that have absentee ballots.
Except those that are indefinitely, that don't need, but those that just want to vote absentee, if they submitted a request for it, they have to mail in the required document. When anybody decides to vote in City Hall, which can only be done two weeks prior to the election, must show ID. And we have to make copies of it.
Just for, not for us to own individual copies, right?
No.
Just for absentee?
Yeah.
I have to make copies.
When you vote in the polls, you got to show your ID.
You got to show your ID.
Yep.
So we got to put some more money in the budget for that? We just talked about budgets. Costs us some more money, right?
There's the lottery copy machine, we can get some revenue off of that.
Carrie, Carrie, Carrie.